So, welcome everyone. I'm going to call to order this work session of the Richfield City Council. It is 5:45 PM and I'll turn it over to our Chief, Jay Huthern.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. And those listening that are in attendance. Today, we're going to talk about Flock camera system or Flock Safety. This has been, we've done a lot of research on this technology and looked at a lot of different types of vendors. We've had what we call advanced license plate reader technology for about 10 years. We received a grant about 10 years ago from the Department of Commerce to outfit three of our squads with mobile ALPRs. This was very expensive technology at the time. We found them to be successful. However, the rising cost of the mobile ALPRs became extremely expensive and therefore we had to discontinue that program. And we thought, well, is there a viable option out there that we can look at that's something that's more standard that covers the whole city versus just having squads out there on a day-to-day basis and moving around the city and have it obviously a little bit more planned out. So, we took on this search that we felt would perform the service and also sort of give us a leg up in fighting crime and doing investigations. And with the amount of stolen vehicles that the region is seeing in Minneapolis and the amount of retail theft, you know, we thought, you know, we need to get on as quick as possible. So, as we look through a lot of these different programs, and there's a lot of different vendors out there, unfortunately, as you all know, about seven years ago, six and a half years ago, on July 7, July 2017, we had the homicide of Jonathan O'Shaughnessy. And so, that's really spurred my drive to find something that we can use to encompass the city that if, unfortunately, if something ever happened like that again, we'd hopefully be able to catch that vehicle and solve that crime. And that's a case that is still active today that we are investigating. We did have success with a similar system in Hammond, Indiana. We had a homicide back in 2020 in the 1300 buildings at East 77th. We worked with the Indiana, Hammond, Indiana Police Department. We were able to find the suspect vehicle that was involved in that homicide with the help of their police department and our investigators. We were able to track down an individual who was responsible for that crime, got him charged, and he's now serving time for that homicide. So, I've talked to chiefs about this system specifically. This system is really coming online. It's in Wisconsin and other states. And it's also being deployed in Edina and by Southdale and also 50th and France due to the amount of vehicle thefts they've had. And also in the West Metro. And what I've been told by a lot of the chiefs is they're having a lot of success solving a lot of their crimes through this system, whether it be stolen vehicles, retail theft, things that we're seeing an increase in. And also, they're building, what I like about is they're building these private-public partnerships. Several private partnerships have these type of cameras, whether it's Great Wolf Lodge in Bloomington or other areas. So, they're having that relationship with the city to help obviously fight retail crime and fight stolen vehicles. And so, you know, we've talked to some people already in the retail world here in the community, and they're very interested in it, whether it's Brixmore at the Hub or it's Target or it's Home Depot, to take a look at, you know, whether or not this is plausible. So, that's where we have been. And where we're at now is to show you what the system can do and what it's about. And so, I'd like to turn over to Kyle White from Flock Safety Systems to talk to you about the system.
All right. Hi, everyone. I don't know if I need to do anything to get it back up here. But thanks for having me today. I really appreciate it. I'm Kyle. I live in St. Paul, so right down the road. So, it's nice to be working a lot with the local community here. I've been doing this for about two and a half, going almost three years now, working a lot with agencies in the Midwest, Iowa, Wisconsin, now a lot in Minnesota. Got through kind of a lot of the state approvals through the state and BCA kind of over the past year, and then really have started taking off in Minnesota over the last six months here. So, excited to show you kind of a little bit of background on Flock. Looks like we're good to go here. And, you know, as we go through it, Chief said, you know, very conversational. So, if you want to stop me, ask questions, feel free to do so anytime. To start with Flock, I like to go through our background. We started about six years ago with a neighborhood in Atlanta. So, our CEO, Garrett, their neighborhood's on uptick in property crime. So, they had vehicles in the Atlanta area driving into their neighborhoods, stealing mail vehicles, breaking into houses, package theft, and really working with the local police to bring Ring doorbell footage to the local police in order to try to catch these folks that were causing problems for them. And they're having a lot of issues catching them because they're getting the sides of a blue vehicle, maybe a person, a description of a person on Ring doorbell. But, you know, really, the Atlanta police are looking for a blue SUV in Atlanta, and there's just a lot of blue SUVs driving around Atlanta. So, there's not much they could do with that. So, license plates came up often as something that'd be helpful. So, he looked into current license plate readers that were out there at the time, and kind of as Chief alluded to, they're expensive. You had to run like electricity and fiber and all the infrastructure to them, which was even more expensive. And the neighborhood just couldn't afford that. So, they actually built a program on a smartphone, an Android, and he strapped it to a pole at the entrance to his neighborhood that would relisten plates as they passed by. And they were able to pair that information together. Police made arrests two weeks later. So, kind of alluding to the name Flock, our products are named after birds, but all the neighborhoods in that area kind of flocked together was what they would say. So, that's where the name really came from. And they put these cameras at the entrance to neighborhoods and caught a lot of these folks that were causing issues across the greater community. And the first two years we existed, we only sold to neighborhoods. So, across Atlanta, California, Texas, a solar-powered cellular-connected camera. So, think sunny states, we've since helped with the cold weather battery charging solar options, which is what's helped us really grow in the northern states. But, we've spread quickly across the country, working not just with law enforcement in cities and counties, but also with the private sector, neighborhoods, businesses, schools, all a lot of great use cases. With those vehicles involved, these cameras can help you solve those cases. So, as we get into kind of what the product looks like, you know, back to birds, it's our Falcon Camera, Automatic License Plate Reader, or ALPR, is what it is. So, it, you know, takes a picture of a vehicle as it drives by, focusing on the rear of cars. So, you get a picture of that back license plate in the rear of the vehicle. And let's kind of go into what makes it work and easy to deploy, especially for like neighborhoods and across cities and areas where you need them. Their infrastructure is free. So, as I mentioned, solar power, cellular connected, you don't need to have electricity or fiber internet. If you do have electricity on, say, a light pole, we can directly tie into that if it's available, but it's not needed. And the fixed kind of aspect of having a camera that's there all the time at those main areas where you might have issues or have people coming from outside of the city into the city to cause problems, they're out there 24/7 where your police can't be everywhere all the time. These cameras really help them multiply their force and act more efficiently and effectively. And then, real-time alerts where there's a national list through the FBI called NCIC, that's going to be stolen vehicles, wanted persons, homicide suspects, stolen plates, missing persons through NECMEC, which is the National Center for Missing and Dangerous Exploited Children. And all these lists are tied directly into Flock. And Minnesota comes through the BCA State File. And this can give real-time alerts to the police of these known criminals who enter your city, and then they can act appropriately before something happens and be proactive on those subjects. And then, ethically made, when I go back to why our CEO built his own versus buying the existing products out there, he didn't like how expensive they were, but also the companies would sell the data. So, it's like, well, I don't want our data for all our residents. So, data's owned by the customers, so we can't sell it, repurpose it. And then also, you know, it's not facial recognition, never will be. It's not used for traffic enforcement, doesn't detect speed, expired tabs, not used for ticketing. And then, it's indiscriminate evidence, or unbiased pictures of the backs of cars. And so, really trying to work with police to give them good evidence to be able to be effective, but also protect the privacy of the individuals who, you know, our first camera's still in his neighborhood. So, that's really a big focus of what we do at Flock.
If you have a question before, so the real-time alerts, so you guys through the cloud or whatever you use, it's like you are constantly updating that and looking for things, and we can add to it if we have an alert?
Yep. So, the BCA has an LPR file specifically through the state of Minnesota, and that ties in with the national file and a couple of local alerts. And that gets updated four times a day automatically through a setup that we work with them on syncing up, basically. So, every day, four times a day, I think it's at like 3:58 AM and PM and 9:58 AM and PM. Not sure why those times, but, you know, every six hours about. So, yep. So, it keeps those updated as well as you're not getting outdated alerts.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Where are these located in the city then? Are they strategically placed in certain areas or?
Yeah. Every city, it kind of depends on what you want to prioritize. A lot of times, you look at what are the primary entry points to the city. So, obviously, you have every major highway going around Richfield here. So, maybe as people get off of those highways coming into Richfield, those are good spots. You can kind of build smaller gates around like retail areas or schools, you know, apartment complexes. You kind of see it get pieced together kind of on the outside and then the areas where people, like where are people coming from and where are they going to, you know, cause problems, basically.
Well, the first, I can help answer it too. The first phase, we're looking at about 10 cameras, and they would be placed upon the main arteries in and out of the city. So, like Lyndale, Portland, Nicollet, Penn, coming off of 35W, the underpass. So, just the main areas that lead in and out of the city.
And we actually can show you that. I had kind of a screenshot of what the rough plan is that we can, Chief wanted to talk with y'all about too. Another nice thing about Flock is we have our own full-time technicians. There's no third parties that could contract it out to do any of the work. And we handle everything hardware-related. So, we'll install the equipment for you. We maintain the equipment for you, update the equipment. For instance, every single winter, we come out with a better battery that works in cold weather, lasts longer, can charge better with less sunlight with a bigger solar panel. We update these things as they come out to make sure your cameras are working as often as possible, even in our coldest months of the year, which is the biggest concern up here for our hardware. And so, that's always been, that's been great. It's a big upside of Flock. Plus, the city and the police department don't have to allocate resources to maintaining this equipment, which is a big reason why other cities have moved to Flock in Minnesota with the time they're spending on their camera systems, whereas now we just take care of all of that for them. And so, that's, you know, everything end-to-end on Flock's end is taken care of as well as a camera breaks, we fix it, all that stuff's included. So...
Kyle, can I interrupt you for a minute?
Yeah.
You want to talk about the permitting?
Yeah.
I know that's done.
Yeah. So, permits vary, you know, based on the roadway or the type of pole we're going to install on, or we can actually install, that's what we call a Flock pole, actually, there in that picture. It's a 12-foot breakaway pole that we can install on the side of the roadway with the solar panel. We can also mount them on existing traffic signals or light posts. So, depending on who owns like the right-of-way of the roadway or the post we're going to put the camera on, we can submit the permits and give all the specs and everything to the county or the city to get those approved. And then, once they're approved, we'll move forward for installation and everything too. So, that's all included in the service as well.
Cool. Thanks.
And then, kind of mentions training, all that stuff, data storage, all that stuff's included with Flock as well. So, how does it work? Kind of touched on this, but really to simplify it, it's proactive alerts. So, real-time alerts, when a stolen vehicle or wanted person enters your city, based off of that license plate that the camera's reading. And then investigative, so being able to identify vehicles faster with what we call vehicle fingerprint. So, in a case of a hit-and-run or retail theft, an eyewitness or a camera might see a blue SUV driving away, now the police can filter down in Flock with timeframe and location and blue SUVs. You can check all these filters to narrow down to the exact car you're looking for. And it takes a lot of the guesswork out of policing, allows them to work a lot faster, be more efficient versus hours or days or, you know, some of those crimes become unsolvable ultimately because they can't find the evidence. And now you can get to a vehicle in likely minutes. And you don't have to guess what blue SUV you're looking for. You can actually stop the correct one, which is really nice to get the right person and maybe not guess. And then, the cameras acting as a deterrent, we see a lot of as people start noticing that as they enter the city in a stolen car, usually the larger cities around, the police are able to be kind of on them as soon as they enter the city. So, they act as a deterrent where people realize they're not getting away with the things they used to in your city, and it tends to give good results. So, what does that kind of look like? What we call vehicle fingerprint, can you filter by vehicle makes, body types, colors, decals, bumper stickers? You'll notice that none of these are personal descriptors. You can only filter on descriptors of cars. So, you can't search for anything about a person within Flock. It's all based on the vehicles. Also, people will take off the license plates. They'll cover the plates in investigations. Now, police can work backwards, get the image of a vehicle that might have a covered plate, and likely start solving some of those as well. So, there's been cases with amber alerts and all sorts of situations where they'll take the plate off of the vehicle, and that evidence can be very useful to still have those reads within Flock. So, on kind of the risk side of it, protecting privacy, as I mentioned earlier, a big piece of Flock. You're putting cameras around the city, like how do they work and, you know, what do they really do? And so, 30-day retention, I like to touch on, it's a hard delete after 30 days. So, it's going to take a picture of the vehicle, but if it's not a known criminal, it's not going to alert the police. And if it's not something the police need to search for, they're never going to see that data, and then it automatically gets deleted. So, it's not amassing this large database of everywhere people have been and gone. It's very kind of short retention along you to work in real time to solve these cases. Also, it takes the human bias out of crime solving. The cameras become the witnesses. Eyewitnesses don't always have the most accurate descriptions for one, but also, like even if you put a person on the side of the road watching plates, you know, what are you responding to? Now, these cameras are taking a picture of the back of a car, telling police it's a stolen blue SUV, and that's what you're responding to. So, really, objective, unbiased evidence. It's not facial recognition, not predictive policing. There's no personal identifiable information in Flock. So, we're not tying in third-party databases that have personal information, like a name of somebody when they get the alert. It's a stolen blue car, and that's what they're working off of. And it's not used for traffic enforcement, speeding, ticketing, anything like that. All state laws within Minnesota it's compliant with, as well as every search has a search reason, which would typically be a case number. Anytime someone runs a search, they'll have their own unique log, and it'll say that they ran the search, what the search was for, and when it was searched. So, that audit logs in there indefinitely. So, anytime they're using the system, they're being tracked for what they're using it for, which I think is important. And then, we've even built out different websites, like our transparency portal, where you can put out policy, different information on the system, just to be linked out right from your city website, to show people what this system does, what it is, and be very transparent with how it's being used. So, all these are great ways to be transparent, communicate what it's doing so people are comfortable with it, that it's doing all the things that you'd want it to do and not what you wouldn't want it to do. And we're in about 4,000 cities nationwide in just the past six years, and I think 48, maybe 47 states at this point. Yeah.
Question?
Go ahead.
I have like a ton of questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Could we go back one slide, please? Two big questions. One, just understanding how this system works. You talked about doing searches. I appreciate knowing about the data retention policy. Is it, does it alert when a car is reported stolen? Is it actively looking from a database of stolen cars or? Because Richfield's so small as a city, I'm just like imagining, we were just talking about a car stolen from our block this week. You know, it's stolen at 3:00 in the morning. It gets reported at 7:00 AM, 6:30 AM. The car's long gone. If we can search for the plate, we can see that it headed, you know, into Bloomington at 3:55. How does this system help?
It kind of, it's nice because we're getting, you know, as you get more cameras like these in the air with multiple, there's like Bloomington PD having it, Great Wolf, Edina PD having them, kind of all over the city, and Southdale. I just met with Lakeville PD, and they were able to leverage Brooklyn Center's cameras on the other side of the city. So, those stolen vehicles go into that database for like stolen cars, NCIC, and then that gets synced up with Flock. And then, if anyone who's using Flock, if they go over to Hudson, Wisconsin, or the other 130 agencies in Wisconsin that are using Flock, they could get an alert off of that list as well. So, if it gets stolen out of Richfield and they go somewhere else, that will get updated in Flock for the other cities' cameras as well. And then, they would get an alert on that vehicle if they end up somewhere else. Is that kind of the question?
Yeah. So, is it, so it would, is it fair to say that the benefit of the cameras here for the most part are for stolen vehicles, other places that are brought here that would be triggered because that would be the list? It'd seem relatively unlikely that people would steal a car in Richfield and then drive it past one of those spots in this. I suppose maybe they do. You know, you'd like to think...
We've had some. We've had some. But also, two, obviously, you know, it would help us with our recovered stonings.
Yeah.
And get those back to the owners that come from different cities. So, I think it'd be...
Sort of like being a good neighbor is part of the system.
Yep. And then, catch those stonings that if they end up, Richfield stonings either in our city or like Kyle had talked about in Bloomington or Edina or someplace.
Yep. Well, I think that's helpful. That kind of helps put a mind map for me how it would work. The other question I have unrelated is for that data retention policy. I know we have our policies about, you know, how we choose to integrate or not integrate with federal law enforcement. We don't want to break any laws, but we're also not actively trying to cooperate with federal programs, trying to locate undocumented community members.
Yep.
Could, do you have a policy? I mean, you have to respond to federal subpoenas, I'm sure. But do you let us know about our data? Would that data request go to you or us?
Go to you. That's, that's a good question. And that's why our customers own the data, not us. So, it's your data. You decide who gets access to it. If they come to us, it'd be like, no, you have to go to Richfield to request that information. So, it's, yeah, it's not this database that's all Flocks. It's like individual databases for the individual communities that own the cameras, like the private businesses that own the cameras, for instance, and neighborhoods, things like that. And to the first question too, a lot of times, the folks that steal a car somewhere else, go into another city, are typically going, they're in the stolen car to do something else. So, having that alert can prevent that from happening too, as they come into Richfield or if they steal a car in Richfield, go wherever they're going. So, yeah, part of the good neighbor thing was a good way to put it, yeah.
And just to add to that, Kyle, we already have a policy for moving at the ALPRs on our squads, and it's very restrictive and tight when it comes to data practices. But also, per state guidelines, we have, we're audited every two years. And so, any searches or any data, and what I like about this system is it's off the system in 30 days. Our old system, it just collected all that data, and then we would have to hire an audit company to have that audit done. That was pretty time-intensive. This, we'll still have to audit, but it probably won't be that time-intensive because of the only 30-day data retention schedule.
And then, yeah, all the searches or anything you've used it for will be in there as well. All slides, a good one, if there's any more questions on it.
Sean?
I'm surprised by your response to Simon's question about subpoenas. So, your company's never received a subpoena from a government that you were required to fulfill directly? You've always been able to refer it to the customer?
Not going to say never because I don't know for sure. Basically, what I've been told the answer to that question is, is it's not our data. It's owned by the customer. So, if anybody wants access to that data, they have to go through the owner of that data.
That's not how warrants or subpoenas necessarily work.
Yeah.
You serve warrants routinely for, you're not saying, well, you think there's relevant information or evidence. You know, it's like, well, I have to serve the owner. You serve the party that is in possession of the evidence.
Right. Whatever we're going to do, a search warrant.
Right.
So, yeah, I mean, that's, with LPR data, because of the system, if he stored the data, or Flock's, not you, but Flock stored the data, then the data request would come to them. But because we own our individual data off our system, then the data request would come to us. I'm assuming then if I, we see a vehicle in Hudson, I have to then do a data request to Hudson PD to get that data.
Yeah. So...
You have to get technical.
Yeah. It'd be, you know, if you know someone's in Hudson, they could then run that search in their data. Or there is sharing functionality in there too, but there's a process for that as well.
Aren't there MOE memos of understanding that have to be signed?
Yep. And there's like a sign, like a signers thing between agencies for sharing per state statute and all that stuff too. But, yeah.
Have that answered.
Yeah. Well, I've got other questions. If you've got more on that, you should keep going.
I think I had similar questions in the same vein, and I just didn't want to take up all the time.
Yeah. Well, I don't want to get super in the weeds on that. A couple of the questions I have that have come so far, the search reason, audit log trail, that sounds good. But I'm curious how that's evaluated, or is that an RPD function that you would like look through and make sure those look legit from time to time or what?
Yeah, that's part of our audit that we have to take a look at. It's in our policy. So, we would, as Kyle's talking about, the search criteria, unless you have a case number or descriptive, and it's part of that, of a case, then you'd be able to search that database. So...
Okay. So, just like theoretically, if you had an officer who was, who had access to the system, and they were using it inappropriately, they were tracking an ex-girlfriend's car living around the city or something, how quickly would you find that out? And like, what would cause you to find that out?
Well, on DVS, we know right away if they do it on DVS. You know, I, I don't know how we would, to be honest, I don't know how we would find that out right away unless we're, I mean, I think it's in our policy, and I didn't bring the policy menu with us. I don't know if we would have to implement spot checks by supervisors in those policies to see what's been served or...
I've had agencies do monthly or quarterly, like just kind of audits of their own or otherwise. The other way you'd find out is that girlfriend complains, and then you're able to easily go in and see that they've been using it and easily prove and fire that person. So, that would be the other way.
Another question I had was how accurate the recognition is. Like, do you have a percentage of cars that it matches the make and model?
Yeah. So, there's actually a filter, a confidence filter within the system that you could go, hey, I'm looking for a blue SUV. And then, you can go to blue and be like, well, I'm not seeing it. You could track that down. So, typically, we have that set at like 95%, or you can go up from there if you want to. We don't add extra filters or like little checkboxes. Like, when you're looking for a house on Zillow, you check like blue SUV. So, you kind of run through those. So, you can drag that up and down. And we added, we add new things. Like, we just added box trucks recently. But we don't add a box truck in there until we know the system can detect it at a high level of accuracy, typically over 90%. But that's where that kind of filter comes in, because maybe time of day, lighting, different factors could play into, maybe there's obstructed view for some reason could play into its confidence, and that's why that slider's there.
Okay. And then, the data that it's creating, obviously, it's per state, putting out written out information of license plate numbers as it recognizes them and details about the car. Is there a continuous video feed that exists somewhere that is not easy access? Or is it literally just producing individual still images?
Individual still images. Yep.
And that's activated by only the presence of a car? It wouldn't do a person walking past?
Motion activated. Yep.
Okay. So, it would take pictures of people walking past?
If it was, if somebody's walking on the road, a lot of times, these are angled in ways where you're not getting like a sidewalk or...
Okay.
Pretty focused. It's not a very wide view. It's why you get really nice images and can read the plates. But, yeah, if like somebody biked past it or walked past it, it would take a picture. But there's not a search filter for that, for instance, to look for like a deer crossing or, you know, things like that, or like a person in a yellow coat. You can't filter for any of that.
And when it does take a picture, is there a visible flash or anything, or is the camera just static?
Just static. There's infrared at night for like the nighttime images for a clear image of the plate, taillights typically, if in no light scenario. Yeah.
Other questions? Go ahead.
No, sorry. Let me, was there anything else here? Oh, no, sorry. It was the 30-day retention. So, is 100% of stuff gone after 30 days, or is there like, the images are stored and the text is not, or vice versa? Like, both the text and the images are gone in 30 days?
Yep. So, all the images are gone. We can do certain things, like for instance, for the audit purposes, we can store like the number of plate reads, which is something required for the audit, something we could pull. But it's not going to have any like license plate numbers, images, any of that stuff. That's all gone.
So, Kyle, we've got about six minutes left because we have a truth and taxation hearing. So, I just wanted to give you a heads up.
If you want to see a couple of examples, I got a couple for you. Questions are important too, though.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to raise a question that I wouldn't expect you to have the answer to as an accounts manager. I would be really curious about remedies if there is a data breach, or if you fail to honor that 30-day retention. So, I'm like, I'm curious on that, on that side. I'm also curious if you do know if you've ever had a data breach.
I don't believe we have. We haven't been around that long, for one, and we've gotten bigger recently. But as we get bigger, obviously, it becomes more and more of a focus. I guess one, EWS is where everything starts, Amazon web servers, US-based servers. So, pretty high-level encryption through those, which is good. And then, also, with the data breach, I guess it'd be the last 30 days of cars that drove by. So, it's not maybe super like, but, yeah, I mean, we haven't had that happen. But as we get bigger, we definitely keep on keeping up with the highest standards, I guess. But I could definitely get a specific answer for the subpoena and that if you wanted me to.
I would, and that's the last comment that I have, that is, I just, I love the capability that it brings. I have some, some practical concerns, like using Amazon servers. I think federal agencies do actually have access to this data in ways that they may not choose to ask us. And I think we've already kind of established that when a law enforcement agency wants the information, they go to where the information's at. They don't necessarily go to the quote owner of the information. So, I appreciate the contract distinction. But I do have some concerns about what levels of government might access that data and whether or not we'd ever know about it. I just want to share that as a concern.
I bet that you're not the first one to be concerned about it. So, I can dig and see if there's a specific like information, answers we have on it. I'm not going to make something up right now.
I've been...
It's a good question, it's a good concern.
Nothing helps your credibility more than not making something up right now. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Well, if you don't mind, I can show you a couple of examples of how this comes into play, as we kind of, you know, look at, you know, Minnesota for starters, you know, working with, you know, over the last six months, really most of these agencies are the ones that started working with us. This list likely going to double in the next six months, it's growing really quickly. As we look at some of the examples, like one of my customers in Wisconsin had a 17-year girl get stabbed and run over in their parking lot of Walmart, she did survive, but they just had a vehicle description. This is where this system comes into play, where eyewitnesses saw the vehicle, give that description to police, they're able to run a search in FLOC, get a license plate within five minutes, and they're at his house within an hour, a lot of evidence still in his car to make that case and arrest. You know, West Dallas, Wisconsin's right outside of Milwaukee, armed robbery, where key SUV that was stolen after an armed robbery got an alert as they entered the city, they were able to arrest all three suspects with felony warrants. And a homicide after another stolen Hyundai sedan came in right out of Milwaukee, they got the alert as soon as it drove in, were able to make those arrests too. So it avoids a lot of the recoveries you get with stolen vehicles too, because getting the alerts while they're in the car, and you can start arresting these folks versus finding the empty vehicle after the fact. Del Rio, Texas, these online predator cases, several ones like this, they'll be talking to kids online, drive hundreds of miles to pick these kids up. And the quote from the chief really says what I want to say for this one, they had basically every direction he went, they're able to track him using the network across the state, working with several agencies to find him back in Houston, just blocked him in his driveway to avoid a chase and keep the girl safe. Smash and grabs through retail areas, you know, five suspects, attention smash and grab, actually drove away, and what's nice about this, the police were able to create that alert, thinking they might come back, and they did come back to try to finish the job. They got the alert as soon as they came back in, were able to catch him before they were able to go finish that job. Silver alerts are great with FLOC, someone with dementia, you know, elderly person drives off, is typically where a silver alert goes out. This system's great, you can look up that license plate, leverage the camera network across multiple different cities before they get lost, crash, go the wrong way down a highway. This gets used about every single day in Wisconsin with their silver alert program that they have, that's 24/7 staffed, it's a really good use case for FLOC. Amber alerts, about 150 cases like this, this is the very first one that they told us to use FLOC end-to-end. From a vehicle description, a stranger-end-stranger abduction, searched FLOC, were able to get a license plate, were able to leverage the network of other agencies nearby, 90 miles away, an agency with FLOC had seen that car every single day, so they probably lived over there. They're able to locate that vehicle in that town 90 miles away, and then ultimately get the child back to his mom within five and a half hours, in this case. I saw this one on the news last night, so I just kind of added it to the deck. They don't have, I'm working with Willack County, I'm possibly getting FLOC right now, but this was on the news, where they have this grainy image of a van, there's eyewitnesses who gave a description, but this is the exact situation, where if you have FLOC in this area, you probably have this vehicle on a license plate within a few minutes versus this being weeks down the road, and they don't have any leads or evidence, and that's why it's out on the news now. And this is a perfect example where FLOC comes into play. So just kind of summing it up, being able to close more cases and work quickly and more efficiently typically results in dropping your crime rates, and you can see measurable results, and I've got about 100 slides of year-over-year results from communities, whether it's residential burglaries, retail theft, stolen autos, really great results that are pretty impactful, and a line about a mile long with really cool quotes with people who're saying that's the best thing they've seen in law enforcement in 20-plus years. So that's kind of the full thing, because I know we got other things you got to get to.
Thank you so much, are there any other comments, questions here?
I just have one, the implementation of this, the timeline, what are we, what do you got me about here in the city?
Well, I anticipated probably 20, early 2024, it's in the 2023 budget. So by the time we get the contract through the city council, it would probably be, what, 2024, we talked about, maybe?
Yeah, it's typically however long like permits or approvals take, and then about six to eight weeks out, to like get on the install schedule, get them up and running, so.
Any other questions, Simon?
Last quick question, I'm just thinking about the death of, the murder of John Ashana C. And in a situation like that, the data might be, might not be relevant for months or years, where, you know, for a period of 20 minutes or a day, it would be useful to know who came in out of Richfield for people to locate a car at a certain time and a certain place in situations like that. They can choose to save all of the plate information en masse for that, that kind of purpose?
Yeah, so you could do an export of like, let's say you have a timeframe after that incident occurs, and you don't have any other information, so here's the vehicles that were in the area in this timeframe, you could export that into a CSV and then store it in the active case file outside of FLOC, for them to be stored for a longer period. But then that would be in that active case file, and yeah.
Then would follow the retention schedule of the classification of that crime, it would be attached as additional information.
Yep.
Sounds like a very promising program, so I'm glad you're looking into it. Is there anything else you want to add from staff?